Good morning and welcome to City Hall for City Council Meeting on June the 21st. We would like to get started with the invocation by Councilman McAtee, and after that we would like Councilman Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on Oklahoma City. We thank you for the challenges that you've put in our past, for the character of our people that have overcome those challenges to move forward. We pray that that spirit will continue, a spirit of collegiality, of looking for what's best for not only today but for down the road for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Be with Mayor Kelly today as he presides at the meeting, give him wisdom to accomplish those things that you would have him to accomplish, and then give us on the council a spirit of understanding, of attentiveness, of decisiveness to make decisions that would be pleasing not only to you but would be beneficial to our citizens both now and into the future. Of these things we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Allegiance to the Five of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a rather short agenda, so let's try to move through this as diligently as possible. We have a defer on the resolution, so moving on to number four, Journal of Council Proceedings. Receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June the 14th.
Move the item.
Remove the second. Approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for May the 31st and June the 7th.
Move the item.
Move the second. We need to go back and we need a motion to defer that to July 5th.
The family of Coral Looper couldn't be here this morning, and they would like to be here on the 5th, so it would be appropriate to actually continue that item until the July 5th.
So do we need a motion to defer this to July 5th?
Move the item to the third.
Second.
Okay. See, we have one item that's been withdrawn, that's on number four.
I have a couple of other items this morning. On page 14, under item 8, I-1, item A, 2249 Southwest 22nd Street, which is the only item listed there, we asked that to be stricken, the owner has removed. And then moving to page 15, under item 8, J-1, item E, 3028 Southeast 57th Street, we asked that to be stricken, the owner has secured. That's all I have this morning.
That's all you have? Recess the council meeting, OCMF-A, there's three items.
Move the item.
Adjourn to OCMF-A, convenus Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, there are two items.
Move the items.
Adjourn OCPPA, reconvenus council meeting, the consent docket.
Move the consent docket. Any individual considerations?
Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions I'd like to ask.
Sure.
On number L, 6L.
6L.
Yes, and number 6, T-1, T-Tango-1, and T-Tango-2.
T-1.
And T-2, Your Honor.
And T-2.
Thank you.
Are you ready to tangle with those now?
I am, Your Honor, thank you. Item L is a request for proposals to be advertised for professional consultant services to complete a visual preference analysis for Oklahoma City for $75,000, and I was taken with this particular project as being one of those things that maybe we could do ourselves. However, I found out that the funding for this project is coming from federal government, so we don't have a lot of discretion in terms of how we use that money. So I just wanted to comment on the fact that we need to be very alert as we ask for professional help. I know that's an important part of the way we're governing right now, is to use outside expertise, but we need to make sure that that expertise is not available within the resources we have at our disposal.
I appreciate those comments. We discussed this before the meeting, and this is a part of the process for Plan OKC, and this is funded out of a federal grant that we received to help us in that planning process.
So are we required to go outside for one of the stipulations on the federal funds?
We don't have people that have that type of expertise readily in-house to do that.
If you make the signs big enough, put them in the right places, that's all that's important. Big letters is what's important.
Yeah, I'll take that advice, sir.
On item T-1, this is a paving project, 178th Street from A Avenue West to the proposed Highway 74, which would probably be just a little less than a mile, it's a $1,600,000 project, and it's fully funded, expected to be awarded in the early summer of 2011 and completed by spring of 2013, which is almost two years. And I know that these projects take some time, this seems like an extraordinary length of time.
Councilman, you're probably accurate in that statement. We'll probably get that project finished before the spring of 2013.
I would hope so, because that carries a lot of traffic, and as we've found out that the people want the road until it's under construction, then they have all difficulties with the inconvenience it causes. So the quicker we can get it done, the better it'll be. Thank you.
Can I ask, what is the vehicle per day count on that, do you know?
I beg your pardon?
You said there's a lot of traffic, how much traffic do we know is on that street?
About 5:00, a lot of traffic.
Okay.
I don't know what a traffic count, I'm sure there was traffic counts done at some point in time, but this is part of our program to continue to develop roads where we have existing development adjacent to those roads, which does slow the projects down a little bit as we accommodate ingress and egress during the construction period.
The only comment I have is that that's, you know, I think the vehicle per day counts on that road is significantly less than 10,000, which some would consider a threshold for, and so in terms of how the timing of these bond projects, why that, maybe, how we decide what comes first and not, how important is the 10,000 threshold in determining timing?
Well, again, when those projects were included in the 2007 bond authorization, most of those streets out north of Memorial and east of Portland already had an excess of 10,000 cars a day on them. This may or may not, I don't recall, but we project that the traffic will be there, and we're trying to get the street widened before we have the issues like we had on 150 of 164th Street, where we've got well over 10,000 cars a day, and we're trying to widen the street from two lanes to four lanes. But Dennis, the key is that Portland is a state project, it's a state highway that does have significant traffic on it at this point in time, and it's under design, probably even under construction maybe, or about to go into construction to increase that. It's a, the last section of two-lane road that connects that highway, 178th, you know, into Edmund, and where there is some significant traffic. It's a major highway that comes out of Edmund, there are Oklahoma City subdivisions that feed into it, but there is significant traffic, not only on the road, I mean, it's less than 10,000, but it's projected to grow because of the fact of the connection with the new highway.
And I think the important part to take from this discussion is it's very difficult to look at a mile or less than a mile of road in isolation. It needs to be looked at in terms of how it fits into with the existing proposed network of highways and roads that he's proposed in that part of the city. So I think it's a good question, but I think it needs to be looked at in a larger context, maybe than just how many cars are on that particular, record as a mile road or whatever. Anyway, on number T-2, is a list of playground projects, and I was a little concerned when there was a single contractor awarded the budget, I mean, the projects for all these park projects. A year or so ago, we had a list of road projects, we had a single contractor, and the result was some of the projects were a long time from the time that the bids were awarded to the actual construction started and completion. And on these park projects, I'm concerned about the same thing happening. I realize there's a savings to be realized by bidding him as a group like this, but I think we need to balance that savings against the inconvenience that some of these delays might, possible delays, might cause our public. One park in particular, my attention is the Pat Murphy Park on Hefner Road. The old Pentagon equipment was taken out about a year ago for safety reasons, and that was well justified. It had deteriorated to the point it was no longer safe. But I think we shouldn't wait too long before we restore that park and put those equipment back. I'm concerned about a long list of projects like this generating some delays in construction. That was my only concern.
From my point of view, we expect to finish this project next spring. It does say 2010 on the council.
I know, yeah.
That's an obvious error, I saw that Friday. We intend to have the contract to be complete next spring.
Okay, but that means that the Pat Murphy Park, if that was, for instance, happened to be the last one on the list, and it was built that way, why, it would have been out of service for almost two years. And of course, part of that is not so bad because there's a major construction project going on adjacent to the park, and it's not a very desirable place to go right now anyway. So maybe it would work in our, the delay may work in our favor. But I'm just concerned about the strategy of awarding a bunch of projects to a single contractor, and the delay it might engender, unless he has the resources to do more than one project at once, I hope that might be the case.
This contractor should have the resources to address it at least multiple sites at one time.
Okay.
And we've had this discussion before, it's a kind of a balance. You don't want to get the projects too big because you eliminate bidders, you don't want to get them too small because you wind up spending a lot more than you should by having little small projects instead of grouping them together.
I understand that, but it seemed like this was a pretty good-sized group of projects. And it was sort of sensitive projects, they're not big dollar projects, but there is a sensitivity in not having your playground equipment available, particularly as we've gone into the summer. Now, the spring's been a little brutal, so we probably haven't had a lot of activity on our playgrounds, but we may hopefully get some better weather as we go forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any other individual?
We do have a short presentation planned for item P, which is the plans and specifications for the Skydance Bridge that will be going out to bid. Mayor and Council, Mr. City Manager, I'm pleased to be here this morning to give you, Mr. Caut said brief, it is a very brief presentation, to bring you up to date on where we are with the Skydance Bridge, refresh your memories, and for the benefit of the two new council people, perhaps they are not familiar with the project as much as others. This is item 6P on your agenda, and it is to advertise the project for bids. A little bit of history on the project. The Federal Highway Administration, through their recorded decision, and in an effort to mitigate the impact to the neighborhoods, required ODOT to provide a pedestrian connection over the new interstate highway. The bridge was connected, the bridge to the south of the highway to the downtown area. The decision was made through the city, the original location of the bridge was to be just west of Union Station near Hudson, and we decided through the Court of Shore effort to move that location to the east side of Union Station near Harvey. The Federal Highway Administration, ODOT, and the State Historic Preservation Office all concurred with that decision. We entered into a design competition, something the city rarely does. This was done in 2008. We received proposals from several firms in March of 2008. We went through a lengthy analysis of those proposals and shortlisted four firms to create models for the new bridge. The teams were challenged to create a unique, symbolic, and timeless design. The design team of MKEC and Booster Design was the selected team, and that selection was made in November of 2008. Their design was inspired by the skydance of the Scissor Tail Flycatcher, the state board of Oklahoma. The 18-story tall bridge will span the new expressway, the location again is just east of Harvey Avenue. The Central Park to the north, and the Promenade Park to the south will be connected by the bridge, and ultimately, there will be a pedestrian connection all the way from the river to downtown. The two skyward-reaching wings will frame paths for travelers on the new interstate highway, and again, the taller wing reaches about 192 feet above the surface of the roadway. This is a model that was built by the firm that we hired to do the conceptual plan for the Central Park. This is looking back north toward downtown. You can see the newly-aligned I-40 and the Skydance Bridge there in about the center of the photograph. The next slide is from the opposite side, looking from north back to the south. Nighttime view, you can see Union Station on the right and the Skydance Bridge on the left. This is kind of a zoomed-in view of that same photograph, again, Union Station on the right and the Skydance Bridge on the left. This is a ground-level view, looking south through what would be the Central Park. You can see the Skydance Bridge there on the left center and Union Station on the right. Some interesting facts about the bridge. The clear walkway is 20 feet wide, the overall span of the bridge is about 380 feet. Again, the sculpture height is 192 feet above the relocated I-40 surface. There's just over 100 tons of steel in the sculpture itself, and there's about 900 cubic yards of concrete that will be used in the substructure. There was a very detailed analysis of the structural integrity, including wind analysis, ice, earthquake, and structural endurance. The current status, we are currently reviewing the final draft of an airspace lease agreement with ODOT. We hope to have this document through your consideration before we receive bids. The last parcel of land was acquired by the MAPS office, and that item was on your council agenda last week. The superstructure project will be advertised today if the item is approved, and we will receive bids on July the 12th. ODOT will be bidding the substructure part, the pier and the abutments, along with their final surfacing contract for I-40, and that will happen in July, and we will award, intend to award, the superstructure contract before August the 2nd. We intend to begin construction in August with site preparation and fabrication of the structure. There's a lengthy fabrication time, about 15 to 16 weeks. The bridge structure should be ready for the installation of the iconic sculpture by mid-December, and that will be installed in that timeframe. Other structure items, including the completion of the deck, lighting, railing, and the approaches, should be completed in the spring. That completes my presentation, although we do have a short animation. JC's going to pull this up, this will give you an idea of what a traveler might see traveling eastbound along I-40 from about, that's the Walker, the Walker Bridge, heading toward the Skydance Bridge. We see Union Station on the left. Obviously, this isn't me driving, I'd be going much faster than this. And that's the Robinson Street Bridge, and then finally, the Shields Bridge. That gives you an idea of what the new interstate should look like once that it's all completed. And I'll be happy to respond to questions.
On the river, we constructed walking or bicycle trails on both sides of the river. Do they exist, if you extended a straight line from the end of this bridge to the river, is the trail or walking path complete there?
Is it completed with the construction of the South Park, excuse me, the MAPS 3 Park, that we will be connecting that bridge?
But it doesn't exist now?
No, I mean, there's new sidewalk walks on Robinson, so it's not, so upon completion, it's not going to be an uncomfortable process through there, but the park, we anticipate a more enhanced trail when the park is constructed, the South Park is constructed, but there will be linkage prior to that.
Now, there is linkage, now you could, with maybe a little degree, some degree of difficulty, get across the south part of where the park is, along the river?
Yeah, really not much difficulty, it just isn't necessarily a, I mean, there are relatively new sidewalks running along Robinson that will take you from the base of that bridge to, down to the, I don't know what that park's called, but the one north of Wally Poos Park. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Has there been any thought given to, in this, when we're in this process of realigning all the MAPS projects, as to how we tie the bridge and something south of the bridge into some kind of a, something so it just won't be there by itself when we get finished? If we move the, if we move this park to the back, which I suspect we're going, at least we're going to move it back some, along with that, I would appreciate there being some kind of a plan or some statement as to what we intend to do with how we're going to tie the bridge to the, to something. And I suspect that needs to be done on both sides of the bridge, not just on one side of it. And it seems to me, and you and I had a discussion about this earlier, that maybe in the process of moving the park to the back, we could connect the bridge either through a bicycle or a walking path all the way to the river, to the River Trail, and turn it around, and make a turnaround or something there, so it has some meaning now, as opposed to, I don't want it to be just out there without.
No, that's very much the consideration that the MAPS 3 subcommittees have looked at in adoption of the schedule. But they talked about, you know, with the proposed option one that's out there, whether that's adopted or not, has to do with finishing some of the park along the new boulevard, and then blending a trail that ties from the boulevard down to the north end of this pedestrian bridge, and then the south end of the pedestrian bridge. There's an area there that's already been acquired by ODOT, and then we acquired some property, but, and that'll tie into, the sidewalks are run down Robinson, that are new and in good shape, that'll tie you right to the river, across 15th Street, right into that park on the north side of the river, and then of course, it'll be enhanced, that will be enhanced when the Southern Park is constructed. So you will have positive access all the way from the boulevard through the North Park, over the pedestrian bridge, onto sidewalks along Robinson Street, down to the river upon completion.
The river, is the bridge going to be bicycle?
Accessible.
Is it walking, or just, can you, could you ride a bike across it?
You can ride a bike across it.
Okay. All right. That's going to be part of the, if we move the park back, that's going to be part of the plan?
Yeah.
That's going to be spelled out in the park plan, that we're going to do that?
Actually, it's in either schedule, option one or option two, that there will be positive connection from the boulevard to the river.
Okay. I'm a little concerned though, as we move along with moving these projects back, we're going to get into this blue, this watercolor idea of what we're going to do, and then we're going to, this debate about what we do, when, and how we do it is just going to keep on, and I recognize that it's a fluid project, that as time goes forward, we'll want to change things, but I'd like to see some sense of certainty with regard to it, as opposed to treating it as just it's a totally blank slate all the time, other than moving the convention center forward. I'd like to see it with some specificity with regard to what we want to do, and this is a perfect project to start with that, is to do that.
But Pete and Gary, or Gary and Larry, I think, can help me on that. I think those were, those were the type of things that were talked about in the MAPS 3 committees, and make sure that we had those type of connections made regardless, and I don't want to speak for either one of them.
Dr. McAtee?
Yeah, and of course, the starting comments that were made here, this, this bridge, if you look at it, was required in the relocation of I-40 as a pedestrian bridge, so, and the, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but the building of the bridge right now is very wise to get it done before I-40, the new I-40 opens up. That's part of the time constraints that are involved here.
Well, let me land, it isn't only prudent, it's cost-effective, because if we try to build this bridge under construction, after the traffic has moved to the new I-40, it's going to be much, much worse.
I don't think anybody disputes that, that's not one of, everybody loves that.
What I was doing, I was leading up to, your parks subcommittee, okay, is well aware of the need to tie this bridge from a multipurpose standpoint, because it's both pedestrian and bicycle accessible, it's ADA accessible also, to tie that loop in so that there will be a way to get to the completed, the fully completed Oklahoma River Trail, which isn't completed right now and is in operation. So I think everybody will be pleased with the details that the subcommittee comes out with, and it will have, I believe, and Gary is now involved, it will have some specificity to it as far as doing that as we move along.
Captain Morris?
Well, this just reinforces the concern I expressed when we were going over the timeline, because none of this, none of these separate committees have been, have their discussions been in a vacuum. I mean, they've, they've all talked about the interconnection with all of the activities, and the Parks Committee has talked about that, and had talked about the fact that they just don't want a bridge to nowhere, and they want something to happen on that, and understanding how it's phased in and so forth. So each of these things, I believe that some of the conversation when we went over that would lead people to believe that we're just randomly making decisions and throwing things out irrespective of how they worked throughout the whole process, and that's not true. That's when the, when the MAPS, overall MAPS Advisory Committee and the subcommittees have met and talked, all of that has been interrelated, so I'm, as with Larry, I'm confident that the Parks Committee knows full well that we don't need a big open lot to a bridge, and then it goes to nothing but another open lot. There'll be something in there before we get to the completion of the park, that citizens will be, that they can have access to it, and, you know, it's going to, it's going to work. So all of this has not been done in a vacuum, they've all, all the committees have been talking.
I guess, but I'm, I'm... I guess, but I want, I want it to be, I want us to talk about it. I, I think that, maybe I'm just dense, maybe I don't understand what's happening here. But I don't see, I don't, there may be a plan, and I, I give it up to both of you that have been to those meetings, you may have that information, you may know all that, that everything's going to be okay. I thought there was an understanding that the $30 million that was to remove the power plant, the transformer thing, was a separate item, separate and apart from the convention center. But that, there are those of us that don't believe that. And I would like, all I'm after is, let's say it, if that's what we're going to do, I want to hear about, I want to know it. I have constituents that ask me questions, and if I have to say, well, I'm going to rely on the committee to do it, I'd like, I need to know what the committees, I need to know what they are saying, because I don't want to defend, I don't want to defend it without knowing what we're going to do. I'm for the projects, I mean, I'm for all the projects. I want all the projects built. I want them all built timely. I want them all done well. But I think we have an obligation to communicate what we're going to do, and not make it so fluid that today it can just be a total change, and I, and tomorrow. I just think we ought to, we can be more specific. We can at least be specific and say, that's what the project are today, as opposed to saying, well, I don't think there ever were that, because I have a clear understanding that the $30 million was to be used for, to do that station, and that was what it was for. There are those of us, and I suspect, I believe they, in good faith, believe this differently, but because it wasn't said on the horseshoe, it wasn't put in actual, in down in writing, then you can have those disagreements, and I don't want to have them anymore. I, I'd like to know what we're going to do. And I recognize it's a fluid plan, but to me, this is just a perfect illustration of we need to say exactly what we're going to do as best we can, based on what we know today, and do that. And if, if what we know today changes, then we can change that. But I'm just trying to get us to be, to kind of come up to the line and say, this is what our plan is, and this is just the first of many. I, there are other things in the plan that I see moving fluid, that I, that maybe there's a good reason for moving it, but I'm yet to be convinced. And I, of course, I'm just one, so.
Jim.
I just want to, want to be clear on that. In regard to the park, there were two options that were laid out. One was Option 1, which allowed for construction along the boulevard, just a piece of it, so that the boulevard would have a park edge, and then connecting the boulevard to the pedestrian bridge. And then a second phase would be the completion of the North Park, and then the third phase would be the completion of the South Park. That's the first. Option 2, you do the whole North Park under the first phase, and then you do the South Park in a later phase. Either of those options provide for positive access all the way from the boulevard to the river, when this bridge is opened or shortly thereafter.
Any other comments? Dennis, thank you.
Thank you. I'll thank J.C. Reese for helping you put that together. Thanks.
Well, we have a motion on a consent document.
We have a motion. Ready to vote?
Vote. Moving on to the concurrence document. Moving to the concurrence document, we have three items.
Three items.
A is in Ward 2, 742 Northwest 63rd Street, planned unit development district. No one signed up.
Ms. Dennis? One question I have. I want to confirm, because there was some confusion. As part of this development, Chertel will be widened?
Chertel will be made more of a thoroughfare as part of this development, and widening, I'm going to let Tim Johnson deal with the widening issue, but it absolutely will be a street that will take some of the traffic issues off of Western, and so we think Chertel will provide a perfect mechanism to allow for a better traffic flow. Dennis Box, I'm behalf of the applicant, and Dan Ladon, Tim Johnson, and Rand Elliott are here. And Councilor, first of all, want to say thank you for meeting with us on this project. This is a project that's 31 acres. This is the eastern portion, we call it East Campus, and it will allow for a variety of uses that will really mirror what has been approved on the west side. So with that said, Tim, on Chertel, the question was widening, and.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. Good morning. We have been working with city staff with regard to the infrastructure improvements in this area. We are currently working water and wastewater to install new sewer lines and water lines to take the load off of some existing old remains that were in the neighborhood. We're going to put in a new trunk line over along the railroad tracks and go south to a new line that the city is building as part of the I-44 interchange, and that's all been coordinated, and those plans are in. We are also currently working on a planned to four-lane Chertel with a median in the middle. We've, plans have been approved for a new signal at Chertel and 63rd Street, those were submitted some time ago. We're going to build that immediately to help with some of the traveling population coming out of the existing parking garage. We constantly update our traffic study. In fact, we're working currently on a, on our traffic analysis for the parking garages to ensure that we're not getting extended delays out of the garages. And currently, Classen is working very well. Classen is our, Western Classen and Chertel will be our three corridors that go north-south. We'll also be making an improvement in the future on 59th Street, where Classen curves now to go across Western. We'll be making out an interchange there as well. We'll take the curve out, put a signal there, and that'll all help in that traffic flow, both east-west and north-south. But the current project on the books is the Chertel widening to four lanes all the way to the I-44 front edge.
At what point do we do the traffic impact analysis that's referenced here?
We've already submitted that.
That's already been completed?
Yes.
With the first specific plan in the PUD?
The, we've done an overall traffic analysis. The next time we come in with a plan for a new building in this, in this PUD, we'll update that again. So the, the staff has already seen our traffic impact study for the overall campus design, but when we come in with our specific use, we'll update it as necessary, because a building may turn into a garage, or, you know, may have more offices than was originally scoped. You know, it's a, it's a little bit fluid, yeah.
Do you have the slide that's out, that comes after that, that shows the uses, Exhibit C? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is, at the time of the approval of the PUD by the Planning Commission, we are still maintaining the community garden, and kind of, if you can picture that in your mind, that's it between 61st and 62nd, and Lee, and Chertel. Parking structure south of there, Central Plant over in this area, and the data center, these have actually flip-flopped. The data storage, this is a park-like setting, there's a big detention pond that's been designed with a healthcare facility around it, not healthcare, I'm sorry, exercise facility around it, soccer fields. So this fitness center has combined with this detention pond, and so.
And that's the railroad going a brief.
This is the railroad at an angle, yes. 63rd, Chertel. So the, the plan, as the designs are being designed right now, are following generally this plan, the specific feel and look of the buildings is what's being developed.
If I could just, just give my own, and I certainly am in favor of this project. I would say, you know, Oklahoma City's excoriated, basically, in national meetings, urban planning meetings, for its lack of walkability, its lack of mixed-use development. Prevention Magazine ranks 500 cities on walkability, and we're not, towards the end, we're dead last, 500 out of 500. So many people, I guess, you know, they had an eye on this tract as, hoping that there would be housing, and we've heard Aubrey McClennan talk about having a campus where we could live, work, and play. And this, you know, sets it up perfectly with a community garden, with a fitness center, sports field, pond, and I think a lot of people, if you look at blogs like OKC Talk, I kind of hope that this would be the area that we'd have housing. Not, not that it's Chesapeake's job to rescue, I mean, I don't want government telling me how to, what to spend in my small business unless I'm adversely affecting others, but I would just throw it out that whatever I could do to encourage housing, everything is set up here beautifully to help Oklahoma City with, with a real mixed-use development. The only thing it's missing is the housing, and that, maybe that'd be in the works, we just don't have a master plan, so I don't, I can't, and I know it's fluid, so we can't know exactly. But whatever I could do as, as Ward 2 Counselor, I know, just to help facilitate that, I just, I just want to throw it out there, that if the housing component were added, it would go a tremendous way towards turning around Oklahoma City's walkability and its, its mixed-use development.
The, and I don't want to put words in dance-math, but, and I'm sure you can answer that, but as the development, and this East Master Plan grew, it was Chesapeake's desire to try and get all their facilities in one spot, and the demand for the number of employees in that area is going to occupy that space, so the current plan, as we know it today, does not have any residential in this piece, in this part. And to answer the walkability issue, from a campus standpoint, it's very walkable. In fact, Lee and Francis Streets that are formerly streets are going away and becoming walking corridors, and we're doing the same thing east and west, so that the, the texture of the blocks is still there, but they're not all streets. They're selected streets, Chertel, as I mentioned, 59th, 62nd will remain as streets, but the, many of them are going to go away and then become walking corridors with fountains and waterways and things like that, which are part of the plan, so travel, the working public there can travel in pedestrian walkways between garages, the daycare, the healthcare facilities. So they are aware of the walkability, the need for that, and the desire to have that, but residential's just not in this plan because of the desire to have their employees in this one location, which we're working, I think, on a total of about 7,000 in this area eventually. You want to add to that?
Thank you.
Any other? Vote. Pass. Moving on to number two, it's a PUD 1439 at 2812 Southeast 29th Street, and it's in Ward 7.
Randy Hill representing the applicant, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
The, I'm going to move approval. The technical evaluations are. There we go. The technical evaluations, there's a note here that you, the applicant has agreed to mark a proposed driveway for site distance and agree to a couple of other TIs. Number one, until you agree to do all those things, Randy?
Yes, sir.
All that's going to be done. Subject to that, unless there's protest, I'd move approval. Vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number three, this item is 13013 North Morgan Road, from an AA Agriculture District to a simplified planned unit district. We have received seven protests, so we need.
It's 51.25%.
It's 51.25% protests, so, and seven votes, and Councilor Ryan, I believe, this is in Ward 8.
It is in Ward 8.
Yes, sir.
Are there people signed up this morning? Francis to speak. Is the applicant here?
Gary Tucker representing Christopher Tucker.
Thanks, sir. Are there, are there questions? This is an application to build a winery, a very limited-use winery. And Bob, to your, I have a question for you. As my understanding, there were two additional TEs at the last minute agreed to?
That's correct, and they've already been added to the document.
Okay, very good. So then those two TEs, one provides for, as I understand it, is winery open only by appointment?
Yes, sir.
And the second one has to do with some shielding, is that correct?
Correct.
Because it's a very nice area out there, beautiful homes, it's an agriculturally zoned area, and this use is consistent with agriculture. It's a vineyard, a relatively small winery there, and it will be open only for a by-appointment. It's not going to be a retail operation where you'll have people there 24 hours a day, or even longer periods of that. The two owners are both fully employed, so that the number of hours that they're going to be available to have an open by-appointment will be limited. The area is a, it's owned A, it's being urbanized pretty severely, there's some residential developments in that vicinity right now. It's not too far from the Kirkpatrick Turnpike, so it's an area that I think ultimately will be urbanized. This particular use is certainly consistent with the development out there now. I would move approval.
Vote. Tucker, you have your votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's continued to.
She's the applicant, she wants to request.
Moving on tonight, item number four, 6446 North Pennile Avenue, and I believe there's a request for Ms. Melissa Wheeler?
Yes, Melissa Wheeler, and representing the applicant. I had actually originally this morning requested this motion, this be continued until the next council meeting. I'm still meeting with many of the homeowners along in that specific area to do away with any protest. I think we've got one owner who owns approximately seven duplexes in the area that I'm right now working with.
Councilman Morris.
Everybody signed up, Frances, other than her?
No one else.
Okay. I'm okay with deferring it a week and talking to the neighbors. I got the same email I'm sure that you're referring to on some of the complaints from the gentleman.
Correct.
I want to make sure that some of the things that were discussed are still there. There was a number of concessions made when this came through previously as far as time of sales and so forth that you're still unable to.
Absolutely.
Yeah. The email from the gentleman talked about a number of things. The, one of them was the using of your maintenance golf carts out on the city streets, and you know that, that's not, that's illegal. You'll have to, hopefully you can find a better way to serve your maintenance needs without running those golf carts out through the neighborhood there.
Absolutely.
He indicated also that he, that you were, although you had improved your trash area with some fencing, I believe, you were still using what he thought was an inadequate-sized cart. Do you have any plans on putting a regular dumpster in there, or are you still going to use the Big Blues, or what's your plans on?
What we do, what the issue is right now are the Big Blues, that that container, the Big Blues are fenced in all the way around. That is then removed to one of the big, large dumpsters. We don't want to put another, you know, four-yard, three or four-yard container out there, because frankly, at the, the last time I went through this, one of the issues with the neighborhood had been the dumpster setting there. So as a. So as a concession to the neighborhood, we did take that out. And everything is behind a gated, fenced-in area at this point. You can't drive by or even walk by and visually see it.
Well, I would just encourage you to get enough of them so that you don't have the same overflow and blowing trash, you know, that they'd indicated before. This is, for council, I know you remember that we went through this one before on a regular ABC licensing, and what they have done is taken that down to a beer and wine only. It's going to be for their tenants only. They won't sell the beer and wine there. The tenants will be able to put it, much like you would on a motel room charge and so forth. They don't plan on, this is not a room for hire. You don't, you don't plan on letting, hire out for parties or anything else.
Correct.
And the time that you're actually closing that is...
9:00 PM.
Yeah, it's in conjunction with their dinner service at night. So 9:00 PM is when they're going to shut it off. So I think they've made a lot of improvements in their request, and if you can use this next week to talk to that last neighbor and get some of that worked out, I think you're a long way towards that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to defer it one week?
I'm sorry, councilman?
Two weeks?
Yes, it'd be two weeks. It'd be July the 5th. Is that right, Frances?
Correct.
We don't meet next week, so that's the problem. Is that okay with you?
That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. For the deferral? Yes. Number five is a 8533 Northwest Expressway from a C3 Community Commercial District to a simplified planned unit development. Councilman Mars, it's also in the award.
Is there anybody signed up, Frances, on this one? I'm okay with this. If there's something you'd like to say, I know the applicant is here and was going to, why don't you just give a real quick explanation of what you're doing there?
Yes, sir. I'm Donna Wally. I'm the current camp director of the Camp Bawal Moore location, and I'm representing the applicant. Basically, I'm here to answer any questions anyone may have about Camp Bawal operations and how we take care of that.
What is Camp Bawal?
Camp Bawal is a premier doggy daycare and overnight boarding facility. The premise of Camp Bawal, it is a franchise that is overrun by a corporation, so we have a lot of rules and regulations that we have to adhere to. We're also inspected by the corporation to ensure that we adhere to those. The Camp Bawal premise was based off of that of a child daycare. And so we run that very much consistent with a child daycare. All the products that we use for the cleaning, of course, are eco-friendly, they're non-toxic because our campers are walking on it with their little four legs, and we want to make sure to keep them safe. It's the same type products that are used in hospital settings and childcare settings. Our days are very structured. The staff comes in at 6:30 in the morning. First thing they do is they let out their overnight campers into the indoor-outdoor play yards. Those are monitored while the campers are out there taking care of their business because they've been outside, you know, indoors the whole time. We clean out their cabins, we put down their food, we make sure that any of the medications have their medications, then they go back up into their cabins. They have their breakfast during that time. The daycare campers start coming in between 7:00 and 9:30 in the morning. They're taken out to the different play yards. We have four separate play yards that are divided up by the size and temperament of the camper. And of course, all of them have to be spayed or neutered, and they also have to be completely current on all their vaccinations because we do have a dog park-type facility, and they're going to be interacting with each other. That also involves a good interview with each dog. It has to be a behavioral-type interview to ensure that they are safe to be around other dogs and that they are safe to be handled by the counselors. A counselor ratio is 15 to 1, just like a daycare setting. We want to make sure that we have one counselor per 15 dogs. We're all trained in basic dog behavior, as well as canine CPR and canine first aid. That way, we can determine the difference between rough play housing, like dogs like to do, and anything that might tip over into aggression-type aspect. That way, we would immediately separate it and keep that from happening. Fortunately, because of our interview process, that rarely happens because our dogs are already determined to be safe in that type environment, so it's rare that something like that occurs. They have multiple opportunities throughout the day to go up in their cabins. The cabins are only utilized for meals and for naps and for overnight boarding. The rest of the time, they are actually in the open play community. In a dog community, of course, it happens, and when it does, we clean it up immediately. And like I said, all the products that we use are eco-friendly, so we clean as we go. And then during the middle of the day, we actually put all the campers up for a nap, and that gives us an opportunity to do even more thorough cleaning in the indoor and outdoor play areas, as well as along the aisles. Our daycare needs are usually satisfied by those who have dogs and work long hours. We have several dogs that are with us for about 11 hours a day. They're dropped off in the morning as their pet parent goes to work, and they're picked up in the evening as the pet parent comes home. Like I said, very much like a childcare facility. And we do monitor those animals and let their pet parents know what was going on during the day and if there's anything they need to keep an eye on.
All right. And there's a, this is actually another, you've got one south, I believe, that you're already up on.
Yes, sir. There's an Edmund location that's not actually run by the applicant. We have the Moore location, which is, and then this will be a North Oklahoma location.
I move approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. B is with, been withdrawn, right? H, C, I believe this is the bus station issue permit to operate transportation facility at 1901 East Reno Avenue. And Mr. Palmeroy, is he here?
May please the council, I'm David Palmeroy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns you may have.
I have a chance this week to talk to Roland about the matter, and questions that I had earlier concerning the potential future alignment with the transportation hub we're building as part of the MAPS process was discussed with him, and hopefully that's something that might happen in the future. I don't think Skip has a problem with this. I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Vote. Thank you, Mr. Palmeroy. D is the ordinance on final hearing relating to the ambulance code. Jim, is that a clear?
Right. These are, the next reordnances all have to do with specific funds that we have, and these are modifications to these funds to bring us into compliance with the new Gadsby regulations on each of these. This is the third time we've been to council, so this is our, there's our presentation the first time, and so this is the third time we've seen it.
Moving second on D, vote. And is there a request for an emergency on this, Jim?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to E. voting passed. And F. All right. Moving on to H, G.
Mr. Vice Mayor, HG has some changes to the Historical Preservation Committee, and it starts with a proposed amendment to the section that's proposed by Councilman Sally.
Yes, I just had asked that we revise the...
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I had requested at an earlier meeting that we consider revising the definition of the member of this committee to be a real estate professional rather than a broker, and that request has been met by this amendment. I would move approval.
Second.
We moved in second. Pass.
That's the amendment.
We also have, Councilman Sally has requested an emergency on this matter?
Yes, sir.
That was a vote on the amendment. Now we'll vote on the ordinance.
Oh, she had amendment first and then the ordinance, okay.
Move approval on the ordinance?
Second.
Okay.
Let me ask you something about, are you guys, are the staff satisfied with this? I mean, I know the HP, at least P.O.K. is not 100% satisfied with it, but that's what compromise is all about sometimes.
Susan Miller with the Planning Department. I haven't heard, I met with Katie from Preservation Oklahoma Friday, and she didn't express any issues to me, but we are satisfied. We've been having a problem with, you're talking about specifically the amendment? For the ordinance? Oh, the...
All the changes.
Yes, we are satisfied with all the changes. We think they'll help a lot in our process.
Okay.
And I would like to request the emergency.
So now you want the emergency?
Yes. I'd move emergency on this item.
And three is...
This is a resolution amending the preservation guidelines.
Move approval.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd ask your indulgence, and I've been advised by our finance director and our budget director that we do need to have the emergencies on D, E, and F, that we need to adopt those this fiscal year to be in compliance with the Gadsby regulations.
Will you have a single motion?
No.
D?
Move approval. Second.
Didn't I ask you that when I was on?
You did, and I was wrong. I'm sorry. I was wrong. Yes, you did.
Move the emergency on, so we have to do it individually?
Yes.
On D?
Yes.
Okay.
Move D first, yeah.
Okay. Move the emergency on F. Okay. It cleans up?
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
I apologize.
It's all right. You just threw me off, so where are we at now?
H. We're on H.
Okay.
These are modifications...
This is another cleanup on some zoning issues?
These are modifications to the design district criterias that we have.
Okay. Pass.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to move the next emergency. I just want to...
Oh. No citizen?
Emergency, can we vote on the emergency now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Coming up to the mic, sir. We'll need your full name and address, please.
Hi, Joshua Zambrono, and right now I'm transitioning from 800 California Avenue, but I'm moving to no address. I just wanted to recommend, I noticed there are a lot of exacting regulations here on business, and I just wanted to emphasize that we avoid unnecessary costs or regulations that aren't absolutely necessary to consumer protections or antitrust, protecting small businesses from actions of larger ones, and just to emphasize our competition and allowing small business to grow without excess regulations or fees. And I just am concerned that all of these might be, some of these might be unnecessary or of dubious value, I guess. They might have lesser value and that it might harm their ability. I'm really concerned about all the small businesses that are shuttering en masse in the city. I mean, they're just all over the place, and so I'm just concerned that we might be having too many regulations or too many fees on them. And I wanted to emphasize antitrust laws to protect small businesses from predatory pricing or other actions by larger companies, as well as possibly allowing advertising for them in some kind, because we've got a lot of businesses that might have good value but just are left on side streets and nobody knows about them. So I just, I just was concerned about the regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Public hearings regarding dilapidated structures, we've already addressed the continuities on those.
The one was listed, we struck that.
Does it need a motion on the...
A motion on the balance of I. And let's move into J. Public hearing regarding unsecured structures, one that was strictly, is that right?
Move out of there.
K is a revocable permit with, is it Skine Sky, Skine Productions?
Skine.
To hold an Oklahoma River, or a event on the Oklahoma River on June the 24th to June the 26th, Ward Six.
Oklahoma River.
L, collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police.
Mr. Vice Mayor, these are renewals of the agreements of, with police firing, and ask me the next three until a successor contract is agreed upon.
Okay. We take each one of these individually?
Yes, please.
L, can we get a motion?
Yes.
Huh?
Assistant wants to speak.
I'm sorry, Councilman Ryan?
No citizen.
I just wanted to recommend a comparison to the national averages for collective bargaining to avoid excess negotiating, because in Michigan, that, some of these states where there's a lot of the collective bargaining, they've really upped their compensation, I guess, and then years later, the state is on the hook for it. So I just wanted to recommend comparing it to the averages. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, again. We've already voted on L. Some motion on L, can we get this vote? M? N?
Move out of there.
And O is a resolution authorizing an improvement, extension, and modification of the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority of its bond anticipation with Dale Business Services Center.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, this is our annual, we have a, we did improvements to the Dale campus in anticipation of them moving, and so we have an annual line of credit to be removed, to be renewed with JP Morgan. This extends the note until June 30th. It actually reduces the loan amount by about $1 million since we're making $1 million in payment. It's a variable rate that currently charges 1.24%. If rates change, we can permanently refinance it in 90 days. And the TIF, it positively cash flows. The TIF district receives approximately 1.14 million in revenues on the project, so...
Claims recommended for denial.
Move out of there.
Number two, we don't need executive session. Moving on to number nine, items from council. Councilman Ryan?
We have two on the agenda if you want to do that first.
Well, we can go ahead and do the appointments on these. Well, let's go ahead and do A first. Apologize, Councilman Ryan. Resolution appointing municipal judges?
This is a resolution that comes on annually to reappoint, or actually reappoint for two-year terms, I guess. This is a resolution that comes on routinely to reappoint the judges. We've reviewed their performance, and I think we're especially fortunate to have the judges that we have. Judge Manger does a good job over there, I think, and you look at the performance reviews that the judges received and the surveys that are conducted through Stacy's office that shows the public's acceptance and the public's perception of how they work, and I think they do a really good job. The salary piece that's in this, they have not had a salary increase in four years. They, when they came up two years ago, they, well, they, for the last two times they've come before, it's been a situation where we've decided to go to hold the salaries at the same rate. Based on their, on a peer cities review, they're still substantially under what they would be with this increase. And so I'm going to... be with this increase. And so I'm going to move this resolution, increasing the salaries and rehiring all the current judges.
B is a resolution in lifting the travel, out of state travel.
That's correct.
I just take an order to, Your Honor, on this particular resolution. Some time ago, the city council adopted a revolution, a resolution, put in a moratorium on city council and mayor travel that would be reimbursed by the city. We did it for two reasons. One, to establish a leadership role, I think, in dealing with the budget problems that we had. And secondly, we matched the city manager's policy that he adopted, put in place for all the city employees. At such time, I believe, July 1st, the city manager will remove his moratorium on city travel. And to be consistent with that, I would suggest this resolution be adopted that removes the moratorium on city paid travel by the city council or the mayor. I would make that in form of motion, Your Honor.
So is this an amendment to?
No, this is a, this is a resolution essentially withdrawing the resolution that we had previously adopted.
Right, okay. So we don't have to change, I mean, okay. Move to the second.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Now we'll go back to items from council. Councilman Ryan?
Just a quick question and suggestion, perhaps, a presentation to the council, a short presentation on how our pricing policy, the pricing amendments that we take all the time, I think it would be helpful to refresh in the memory of some of our council members here, and we've got two new council people who may not understand fully how that system works. And then it would, I think, be assuring to the public to realize that we have a process in place that ensures that that money is well spent.
We'd be happy to do that, and obviously, not obviously, but next week, our July, or in two weeks, our July 5th is always a sizable packet as we begin the fiscal year, and so we'd be happy to-
I don't think there's any hurry on it, but I do think it would be helpful.
I think it'd be very timely that we do something in two weeks when we have our first pack of the year.
The salary?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I did have a couple of things I wanted to mention. Maybe a month or so ago, we had the opportunity to honor Pendleton Woods there at the city council, and I just wanted to let everyone know that he was honored in Washington, DC, last week with an award called the Older Volunteers in Rich America Award that was sponsored by MetLife. He was nominated by the Epilepsy Association offices in Oklahoma City, and as a result of his recognition, they were also awarded $2,500. He's an amazing citizen of our country and of our city, and I just wanted to let everybody know of this extra award. And Penn was very quick to say he's never done any of his work for recognition, but if you stick around long enough, sometimes you get recognized. That's the way that seemed to work. Couple of other very brief things. I wanted to congratulate the Plaza District for their Urban Pioneers Luncheon. They recognized Bill and Bob Ross last week at a wonderful event. Councilman Ryan was there as well, and we learned lots of history about 16th Street. It was very interesting. The Capitol Hill Main Street Program had a strategic planning session last week that I thought was incredibly interesting and energizing, lots of things going on down there, and I want to recognize them for taking the initiative to do that, and that was actually funded in part by a city grant and led by Kim Cooperhart in our planning department, talking about urban revitalization and conservation districts. It was wonderful. I did have an opportunity to visit Fire Station 7 down at the other day, and with Chief Bryant, had a wonderful tour. It's going to be one of the real gems of our fire department's new technology, wonderful new accommodations for the firefighters. We've really made some great upgrades, and we hope to be open in July. And I know this has been an issue for the neighbors. It was a very complicated rebuild of a station. We had some erosion problems underneath the floor, and so we've had to do an awful lot of work. But in that redo, we gained a lot of square footage, and we have a really great addition to the neighborhood, so I was excited to see that. I want to congratulate the Urban League. I had an opportunity to attend their banquet at the National Cowboy Museum on Saturday night, and also did a great job. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just two things. One, I want to thank the Retired Firefighters Association for inviting my wife and I to their picnic Saturday. We had a great time, got to meet a lot of people we hadn't seen in quite some time. It was very enjoyable. And that museum that they had it at is, unfortunately, that was the first time I was there, very nice facility, so I encourage everyone to stop by whenever they can. And then later on Saturday, I had the pleasure of welcoming the Miss Senior America of Oklahoma pageant. It was held at Oklahoma City Community College, and hopefully that pageant will make Oklahoma City their formal site from now on in the future, and it was a very enjoyable time. Thank you.
Councilman Ryan?
Couple of things. One, I want to thank the manager for the report, the Tobacco Secession and Wellness Resources Report. I had the opportunity to talk to people from personnel since the last meeting and knew this was coming, and I appreciate it, because I think it does show that the action that was initiated by Councilman Shadid concerning closing the smoking rooms inside the building is a step in a plan. It's my understanding that the city-county health administrator is going to be here next, in two weeks, to talk about the overall plan that's going on with regard to health, fitness, not just smoking, but everything that's going on in the county. And so I appreciate the, I appreciate the report. Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting of the South Walker Neighborhood Association. It's the neighborhood association for the neighborhood I grew up in, and after about 30 minutes of explaining to him about the discussions that we've had concerning MAPS, I think one of the things I want to point out is that while every ward in Oklahoma City, while Oklahoma City as a whole passed the MAPS program with a nice margin, not all wards did so, and mine did not. And so I have an obligation to people that I represent to, because they didn't vote for MAPS does not mean that my obligation is to try to keep it from happening, because the city as a whole voted to make it happen. But I think my obligation is to make sure that it's done in a way that is open, and that's what my attempt to do is. Because when I go to neighborhood meetings, I, the MAPS program is not open arms, oh, tell us all the good things that are going to happen about MAPS. They're still concerned that it passed in the first place. So, everybody has different constituencies, and everybody represents those constituencies in the way they see fit, that way they believe is in the best interest of their constituency. So I don't want people to misunderstand when I raise questions about it. It's not that I'm opposed to it, that's in the past. That happened a couple of years ago, whether we're going to do it or not. My concern is that I be sure that I represent those folks that are paying the same tax rate that others that weren't in favor of it, to make sure that it's spread out among all of citizens of the city, and it's accounted for properly. And so my hour as speaking to that neighborhood association was not untypical of those that I attend. The first 30 or 40 minutes of it is defending what's already happened. And I think people accept that, but I do think they expect it to be done fairly, and they expect it to be administered in the daylight, in the sunlight, and I think that's part of my, part of what my concerns are. They, this neighborhood association that I attended is a small one, but it is in the process of being revitalized, I believe. There wasn't more people there than had been for a long time, and so I look forward to a revitalization of that organization and others in South Oklahoma City as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilman McAtee?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank George Feeney and the retired firefighters. I was practicing Dr. Shadid's physical exercise Saturday morning, so I got there with my wife a little bit after you did, but 18 holes of golf in the heat, real qualify, I think, for physical exertion. But just like to comment, the Retired Firefighters Association, and Phil Seifert's there, enjoyed the conversation with Phil and George. That's a group that really has bonded together over the years and taken care of their own, they minister to each other, they encourage each other, they visit the sick, they pray for each other, and it's really heartwarming to see the camaraderie that that organization has, and wish all organizations had that kind of glue after their employment termination came about. I'd like to encourage the residents of Windsor Hills to attend their neighborhood picnic tonight at 6:00 at Will Rogers Park. It's a great, will be a great time to get together. And then also I'd like to encourage the businesses. A gentleman came up and talked about small businesses. There's been a small business organization formed on Northwest 23rd Street called the Windsor Area Business Group. They're holding a meeting at 8:30 Thursday morning at Goporum Restaurant in the Windsor Hills Shopping Center to look at the vision for the Northwest 23rd Street Streetscape Project that was approved by the voters back in 2007, and which will be, construction will start in 2013. And so I'd like to encourage all the business owners along Northwest 23rd Street to come on board and join together to make that area a vital commercial area in the years ahead. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Shadid?
Couple of things. I really enjoyed the meeting on Thursday at the Sierra Club on the Urban Chickens. I think we have a speaker, so I won't steal her thunder, but after last week's meeting, Pete pointed out to me that almost all cities with an NBA team do have urban chickens, except for ours. It was, it was very, it was a healthy discussion. I appreciate Bob Teener and Dan Burnett and Debbie Martin coming. I think it's clear, I mean, I think I knew it already, but especially from that meeting, that we already have urban chickens. I mean, it's ubiquitous, ubiquitous throughout the city, especially mechanized wards. There's got to be hundreds of homes with urban chickens already. We really don't get code enforcement complaints, and so I think that's a positive sign. But I personally would be in favor of just picking a neighborhood, designating it an urban conservation district. You have to go in a 300-foot radius and make sure everybody's okay. Start collecting some data and see what kind of complaints we get, see if it works, or if it doesn't work. If that works, do another one or two or three more, and then consider whether to do it citywide, but move incrementally. I think the price of food is going to escalate in the years ahead, and this is a very simple solution that cities across the country are implementing. Secondly, I want to wish everyone a healthy and happy Pride Parade this Sunday. For those who have not attended the Pride Parade, it is a unique event in Oklahoma City culture. There's nothing, no other event, they're expecting 70,000 people. There's no other feeling like when you pass over the hill to see thousands of well wishers and the camaraderie. It's one thing to hear the roar of a crowd, you know, at a football game or basketball, but just to see thousands of people in Oklahoma City streets isn't really replicated with any other cultural event. And it's just people celebrating life and accepting everyone for who they are, accepting our diversity. That's indicative of a big league city. To celebrate our diversity, to let, that everyone is accepted here, everyone's protected here, it is a human rights issue. One goal of the Pride is start to move towards developing a health center, and I encourage everyone to consider paying the $10, suggested donation to start to buy the land there on 39th to develop a health program. It is difficult for many patients, many HIV and AIDS patients, there, trust me, there's a lot of discrimination in the healthcare system for those patients. It would be nice if we had a safe place for our gay and lesbian community to be able to address health concerns in a safe environment. So, it is a human rights issue. It's also an economic development issue. As we recruit companies like Boeing and others, trust me, there are large amounts of gay and lesbian employees in all these organizations, and they want to know that Oklahoma City celebrates its diversity, that Oklahoma is going to protect all of its population. And I think the Oklahoma City Pride is a very strong statement that we do celebrate our diversity. It's, I just encourage everyone, if you haven't been there, to walk over the hill and see those thousands of people. It's truly inspiring. Thank you.
Councilman Morris?
I really don't have anything, other than I see another scout in the audience who I suspect is working on a badge of some sort. Why don't you come forward real quick? We'd like to honor our scouts that are working on that. Citizenship badge, maybe? Okay. Why don't you come up to the mic and tell us who you are and what school you go to and what you're working on?
My name is Joseph Fakoko to Hefner Middle School, and I work on my communications merit badge, so that I communicate with people better.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you coming down, and appreciate you working towards that, and your support back there from your family. It looks like it's good, too, so thank you for what you do.
What grade are you in school?
I'm in the, I just, I'm going to eighth grade.
Eighth grade, okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, last Friday, I had an opportunity to attend the homecoming, the homegoing services of Ms. Clara Looper, and I know that we were scheduled to provide a resolution to the family today, but unfortunately, we're not able to be here today, and it's been deferred for two weeks. But I've listened to a couple of comments, and I would like to acknowledge one thing that I have witnessed in this city, is that some individuals have definitely did everything that their body could allow them to do to bring about change of humanitarian concerns in our city of Oklahoma City. And I think we should be proud of the fact that in spite of the bad, in spite of the ugly, in spite of the unlawful, that there has been a major transformation as it relates to race relations, as it relates to culture in this city, and as it relates to humanitarian concerns for each other. And there's many people that could be recognized and could be honored as it relates to their giving, their heart, their commitment, and their courage. And Ms. Looper was one of those individuals that would definitely stand on top of anybody's list. And so it was a great honor to sit, and as I said in the, in the audience, there I had a former mayor who sat to my left. To my right, I had a Muslim. And then there was me, and to my back, there was the Oklahoma City Color Guard. And you look back 50 years ago, and you know that never would have been possible. And for this city to do what it did in reference to accommodating and assisting the family as if, in reference to her services at the Cox Center, to know that at one time, that this was the same lady that came to this city hall and was not allowed to meet with the governing body of this city. And it wasn't that long ago, but to know what one person and her commitment to life, not just about race, not just about color, not just about class, but simply about the heart and the commitment of human life and fairness for everyone. And so, to those individuals who were responsible for making the Cox Center available, I want to thank you, Mr. Manager, and all the other staff. It was a beautiful setting. I've never sat through a three-and-a-half-hour funeral, but because of who she was and what she had done for the state of Oklahoma, I would do it all over again. But we won't have that opportunity. But Ms. Looper was a great individual in the state of Oklahoma, and we should be proud- But Ms. Looper was a great individual in the state of Oklahoma, and we should be proud of the fact that of most of her adult life, she committed it to changing the course of life in the city of Oklahoma City. And that the history now, I think, will be clear, that when you look at the books that has been written in the past, there's going to be a new book that's going to clearly identify the fact that the first set-in movement started in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, at Katz Drugstore and not Greensboro, North Carolina. Thank you. And City Managers' Report?
Mr. White already commented on the smoking cessation report, and so I have nothing to add.
Okay. We have Ms. Sarah Brayden, is it Brayden? I'm sorry, Mr. Sykes? I apologize. Come on, Phil.
I didn't sign up to speak. Phil Sykes, Oklahoma City firefighters. I just wanted to, on the cessation report-
Yes, sir.
-I just wanted to, in a very public way, to acknowledge Chief Morris on this particular issue. The culture that I came on in the fire department 23 years ago, when you walked into the fire station, there was smoke in there from all the firefighters that smoked, and it was really a big issue citywide. And I think the chief took a very proactive approach on that, was very supportive of the firefighters that wanted to see an end to that process where people could come in, where the firefighters would come in and smoke in the station. And so by taking the leadership role in that and putting an end to that, I think we have a much healthier fire department today. I just wanted, in a very public way, to come up here and express my thanks to Chief Morris, now Councilman Morris, on that particular issue. And I highly support Jim's efforts here, and Councilman Shadid, and the whole council's support for this whole cessation program. And I think it's going to make a lot healthier employees in the long run. I think that's important for the city. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Could I make a quick comment? Phil, just before you sit down, I just wanted to say that when I was with Chief Bryant the other day, I learned something that I'd like to share, and that is that the fire department participates in the Red Cross as Heroes campaign and typically makes a contribution of $1,000 to be designated as a hero. And this year, we were a little teeny bit short in reaching that goal, and Phil, you were very kind to make up the difference and be sure that the firefighters did make a $1,000 contribution and were heroes for the Red Cross. I'd like to thank you for doing that.
We're happy to do that. Thank you, Councilman.
Now, citizens, is it Sarah Brayden? State your name and address for the record.
Sarah Brayden, 1143 Northwest 38th Street. As Dr. Shadid said, there was a meeting in the Sierra Club on Thursday, and I spoke about backyard chickens. And I just want to thank Dr. Shadid and all the people from the city who came to that meeting. There was a very lively question-and-answer period kind of after I spoke, and it was really helpful to have Dr. Shadid and the representatives of the city present at the meeting to kind of help. Well, I think it went both ways. I'd like to think that the people from the city really kind of got a good sense of how people who care about the environment and, you know, are feeling about backyard chickens. And I have some information that I shared at that meeting that I'd like to pass around if I could, to share with City Council and you. I'm kind of short. Is this, am I doing okay with the microphone?
Yes, you're fine.
Good. The first, let's see, once everybody's got the packet, I think that a lot of the information in this first packet kind of demonstrates that backyard chickens are legal in cities around the country that we respect, cities that we would really like to emulate. The first page of the packet, the 10 best cities for the next decade from Kiplinger's. As you can see, eight out of these 10 cities that are considered to be the 10 best cities for the next decade allowed backyard chickens. And there's, you know, some of the restrictions are listed to the extent that, let's see, on these first two pages, the restrictions are listed, so you can kind of get a sense of what those restrictions are. On the second page, America's Best Cities for Business from Forbes Magazine, you can see that all 15 of those allowed backyard chickens. So really, this is kind of a normal, regular thing that these cities are doing, you know. And then the top 100 companies to work for, that starts on the third page, three of those companies, Chesapeake Energy and American Fidelity Assurance and Devon Energy, those are located, their headquarters are in Oklahoma City. If you go, you can see there are a lot of yeses in the third column as far as backyard chickens being legal. And on the last page of that particular chart, you can see that 78 of the top 100 companies to work for are headquartered in cities where backyard chickens are allowed. So, you know, we're on this list as far as three great companies that are located here, but a lot of the cities, you know, that have these companies allow backyard chickens too. So, and then the last, then there's the best 30 cities for jobs in business from Hub Pages. And you can see that 25 of those 30 allow backyard chickens. And then on the last page, as Dr. Shadid referred to, the NBA teams, most of those allow backyard chickens too. So I just wanted to be sure that, you know, you all understood that this really is not, you know, some crazy, I don't know, crunchy granola Seattle, Washington kind of thing only. I mean, it really is, all these cities around the country are allowing this. And I have another packet, someone mentioned the code enforcement, and I know that code enforcement is a concern, and I would not want the cost of code enforcement to go up, but we are already enforcing our current law, so there is some code enforcement going on to some extent. And I have, about a year ago, I interviewed six code enforcement officials in some of our peer cities. And I wrote out those interviews, and I'd like to pass those around. They're very interesting. Code enforcement is not, you know, perfect science, I know, but a lot of our peer cities really feel, you know, their code enforcement officials really feel that enforcing backyard chickens is not, you know, a terrible burden. So if I could pass those around to, I'm sorry, I only had, I didn't have quite enough copies, and I probably don't have this either, but sorry if you can share. So, does anybody have any questions? No.
Sarah, I actually did have a question. In doing some of the research when this came up earlier-
Yes.
...I did discover in lots of cities around the country that many chickens and roosters and things are being taken to animal shelters. People that think they want them-
Uh-huh.
...get them, and then discover it's more of a problem than they thought it was going to be, it's more of a mess. And so that the shelters around the country are being really overrun with fowl. Did you run into any of that research in your work, and are you concerned about that as an issue?
Well, I got an email, and maybe you got the same email, saying, from an organization that is against the legalization of backyard chickens. And ironically, they're against it because they are, they're a vegan organization that doesn't approve of people even eating eggs, you know, vegeta, it's like vegetarian, but they also don't eat eggs and don't feel that people should, which is fine, you know, and that's their choice. But I thought it was ironic that they were targeting people who are trying to legalize backyard chickens. I mean, I'm kind of on their same wavelength, but I do eat eggs, so I felt sort of strange being targeted by them. And that was where, that was the only time I've ever heard of that. And I discovered that it's possible to search, like, say, your dog runs away and you want to go online now, now, with technology, you can go online and you can search for your dog at the animal shelter. And I did that in many, many cities around the country, and they, you can search based on the type of animal. And I think I found, I don't have the research in front of me, but I think I did find one chicken in one animal shelter. And other than that, on the online research, there were no chickens in animal shelters. So that's the extent of the research that I've done. Any other questions?
Ms. Brayden, we want to thank you for your presentation. It's obvious that you have a deep passion for this, and you've done a lot of work, and I remember you from last year's presentation, so-
Yeah.
...we thank you for continuing to educate us in reference to this endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Joshua Sobrano?
Sabrano.
Sabrano?
With a Z, yes, Sabrano.
Okay.
I don't think I signed up to speak on tobacco cessation. Would I be allowed to speak now or just?
Well, you have three minutes, so you can speak on whatever you want to speak on, Mr. Sabrano.
Okay. Concerning tobacco cessation, I would like to point out that we should pass the costs on to industry or companies responsible if the government is forced to pay for the lifestyle choices or else not governmentally cover healthcare costs related to lifestyle choices. And I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak to the Pride Parade, I guess. And I do think we should protect their essential rights, but I don't understand the intent of this parade's movement, that they be recognized as a separate demographic for no other reason than that they wish to be contrary to the will of America's majority. And since so many homosexuals have had sexual abuse or abuse in their past, I question whether it's a psychological disorder as opposed to an actual separate demographic. So, that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you very much. What time is it?
10:14.
You want to go? We adjourn.[1787.41]